Good afternoon. The meeting for the zoning board of appeals will now come to order. Roll call.
Mr. Bocelli. Mr. DeAngelo. Mr. Lopes. Mr. Mazzoni. Mr. Tucker.
Present.
Mr. Pelton. Quorum is present. The first application before the board is application A 1820. This was continued for the meeting of June 27, 2018. The application of Gary Demasi, 173 Robey Road, Webster, New Hampshire, requesting a raya setback variance on the existing house and garage to enable the appellant to resolve an encroachment issue at 50 Ford Street Revere to allow the appellant to petition the city Revere Planning Board for a subdivision approval not required to create a new lot A1 Ford Street Revere.
The applicant present, please.
Thank you, Mr. Board Members. Peter Cociari, I'm representing Gary Demasi. At this point, we would ask for a continuance till next month so we can do some clarifications that were suggested to us for the plan.
Is there a motion to continue? Roll call.
Question now comes on continuing this to the August meeting. Mr. Bocelli. Yes. Mr. DeAngelo. Yes. Mr. Lopes. Yes. Mr. Mazzoni. Yes. Mr. Tucker.
Yes.
Yes. This is granted to continue August meeting. What are we talking, the 22nd or the 22nd? August 22nd? So the 29th? Let me see what's going on. Yep. This is continued to August 29. The next application before the board, excuse me, is application A 1827, the special permit. Also see application A 1704, special permit. The application of Christine McCarron, 450 Revere Beach Boulevard Revere, requesting a variance in special permit of titles 17, 1724, 1728, 1732, 1740, section 1724010, 1728020, 1732050, 1740030 for the revised ordinance. Minimum lot area, lot frontage, front yard setback, side rear parking and screening to enable the appellant to expand and extend a non-conforming structure to construct an eight-unit apartment condominium on Lot Part C at 450 Revere Beach Boulevard Revere.
Could the applicant step up to the microphone? Press the button and state your name and address for the record, please.
Christine McCarron, 450 Revere Beach Boulevard. The situation at 450 Revere Beach Boulevard is there is currently a non-conforming lot with a single-family house. There are zoning problems with the existing building. The existing building is only 66 inches from one side setback and 16 inches from the other side setback. It's encroaching on the sewer easement. The foundation is not compliant with conservation and impedes the flow of groundwater and it's also almost touching the power lines. The approved building that was received from special permit in May of 2017 was for a two-family, six-bedroom house, 34, 150 square feet, 53 inches high. If you look at the drawing, you can see the red structure is the building that was approved. That was to sit on the same footprint as the existing building. The building that we're proposing has 10-foot setbacks on all sides, which doesn't sound like very much, but it's actually 80 feet from the nearest neighbor. It's more than 10 feet from the sewer easement. It's an energy-positive building, meaning that it will produce more energy than it uses. It has a green roof. It'll be obviously compliant with all the conservation codes so the groundwater can flow freely. There have been 234 rental units added to the boulevard in the last 18 months and no condo units. I know there are some that are potentially looking to be approved, but owners obviously have a different stake in the building than renters, so... You want us to put the pictures on the other side? And I'd like to have my architect real quick speak to sustainable development and how great that is because he's done a lot of sustainable buildings. Do I have, does he have another minute left?
All right. So go right ahead. My name is Jim Pyatt. My company is Pyatt Associates in Milton, Mass. I've been working with Christine for about six or seven months now. We've been doing our own development to some cases and a lot of architecture for clients since 1982. Our very first project was a passive solar townhouse, two townhouses in Cambridge. We just completed eight units in Dorchester near Codman Square, which are net positive. And so we think we know what we're doing in that regard. We have solar panels on the roof and she fully intends for that to be. The project as designed is setback.
Could you please favor and put the those over this side so they can see it from the public on the screen?
Okay, just a little bit hard. Pardon me? I will give you one after. The slightly hard to see drawing on the left shows sort of two little rectangles to the right. Those are approximately the location of the existing houses' neighbors on the boulevard. The second block in the middle is what was approved last June to be built. The last block is what she is proposing instead of that other one. There's no question that the building is wider, but it is set much farther back. It responds to all the flood conditions and we think... The green little shape in the back is the proposed design in perspective from the same view. I'm standing clearly on Revere Beach Boulevard. The red, as Chris pointed out, is what was approved last year. So we think the building is tucked back more sensitively than it was, farther away from neighbors, farther away from Revere Beach Boulevard, and I think that's what we have to say. But we could take obviously all questions.
Thank you. Seeing that it's a public hearing, I will ask if there's any other proponents, anyone in favor? All right, sir. I'm asking for proponents right this minute, so once, I'll get to opponents after. Are there any proponents, anyone in favor? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. Are you a proponent, sir? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Nope. One more time, you shut it off.
My name is John Champa. I live at 43 Green Tree Lane, Revere, Mass. And I've been in Revere since 1990, lived in Revere since 1990. And I think this project is a good thing for Revere because it's, I think, probably the first sustainable building that's been built and it'll attract a lot more of that type of development. And I think the aesthetics of the building are beautiful. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. Any opponents, anyone opposed? Kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. There is a two minutes for any proponents and opponents.
My name is Lawrence Michelson. I live at 454 Revere Beach Boulevard. That front house is mine, the one on the right, that I built, started in 2010. I have a copy of the registry of deeds and there's an article in the registry of deeds that does not give Christine or John permission to go to any other lot other than Lot 1, which the house is on at the moment, a single-family house. The problem right now, and it will remain a problem if you so choose to give them the variance, the lots are non-conforming, it's in a flood zone, which I'm worried about. And second of all, the amount of traffic that will be increased on the easement will be something unbearable and they do not have parking. I have some pictures taken. There has been lack of consideration. I put the driveway in when I built the house. I do the plowing. I have a picture here lately of the other day. Here's what transpired. A car pulls down the driveway and parks. They have no right to do that.
Put the zoning so you could give that to the building department or the police.
Okay, I shall do that. I plow the driveway. Nobody chips in. I have a gardener that sweeps the driveway. Nobody pitches in. I spent $4,500 to do the driveway. Nobody comes forth and say, hey, look, I'll give you a third of... We all share it, three of us. Tina shares it and also the person that shared it was Tony Guide. Tony Guide cried poor mouth. He didn't have any money. And I felt bad for him because he had a real sick wife, a real sick wife. There was a problem, there has been a continuous problem of parking on the driveway until I really solved it. And how did I solve it? I asked Tina that if she has a guest, please do not block the driveway. You can use a space in my yard. So she does that. She has somebody that rents an apartment. He was blocking the driveway, have pictures of this. I says, please don't do the driveway. Have him park in my lot. There's plenty of land there. They do not have the proper facilities for parking. And if you choose to give them the variance, it's going to be a disaster over there. I'm telling you, it's going to be a disaster. There's a lot in back of my building. I asked John to clean it up. So he said he's going to clean it up with his son. That never happened. Then I asked them again, John, are you going to clean up that lot? He says, oh yeah, I'm going to clean it up. So we went with a weed whacker. He whacked it. It looks terrible over there. I have pictures of it if you'd like to see it. Now all the stuff is blowing onto my land and it's seeding over there, et cetera.
But that's not a zoning issue, sir.
Well, it shows lack of cooperation and there has been lack of cooperation. They brought a dumpster on my land. I didn't say anything. It's going to be an absolute disaster and I request that the board reject the proposal for that building. When we spoke, Christine and myself, why did you buy the lot? Well, we want to live over there. That was not true. I said, why don't you put up a nice raised ranch over there? Well, we would consider that, but that never happened. It went from one thing to another. They're living under a disastrous condition. The roof leaks, it's got mold in there, and yet nobody seems to care about nothing. I strongly ask the board to reject the variance. It's a flood zone and it's not good for the city and it's not good for the people that are living there now.
Thank you.
I hate to do this, but it's true. If you want to see the, you don't want to see it.
We are...
Just one lot, they have access to added easement to that one lot. They cannot use the second and third and fourth lot. And they have no way to get in there. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Are there any other opponents? Anyone else opposed? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Valentina Patterson, 452 Revere Beach Boulevard. That other white house on the other side is mine and a half of a driveway is mine as well. So it is absolutely impossible to park many cars on that little piece of property, which we have to use all of us. And they always blocking it and we cannot use it even with the two cars they using now. What you want to do with 16? How can you look at that? And this is a wetland and conservation land. There's no way to build anything there. It is a high voltage electrical line going through that. It is a sewer line going there. What are they thinking? It's just, you know, like putting something from the, I don't know, sun on the ground and behind my houses. That's not what we want to do there and we are absolutely against that and we'll go everywhere for that. It's not going to happen.
Okay, thank you. Are there anyone else in opposition? Anyone else? Hearing not all closed that side of the hearing. Any members wish to speak?
The driveway is leading to the back. Is that a common driveway on both sides?
It's an easement, yeah. It's an easement granted by my two neighbors so that we can access the back lots.
So if they don't grant the easement, if they don't grant the easement any further, how would you accommodate the parking?
The easement leads to Lot 1, but it doesn't, that I've seen say that you can't build on Lot 1. I have a copy of the easement here and basically it says that it's for all purposes, says this for all purposes for which may be now or may ever be allowed by the city of Revere. So I'm not sure. I mean, I'll do some further research and see what they're referring to.
But I'm pretty sure your neighbors has a say on that easement if they use that driveway, right? Because the parking would be in the back of the building, right?
The parking would be where the current house is.
Where the current house is.
Yeah. The current house would come down and that's where the parking would be.
I would think that's something that would have to be looked into further.
Yeah. Yeah, I searched it back to 1929 and it seems to say that it could be used for any purpose, but I obviously have to look and see what they're referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions?
Could I ask for a copy of the document that you are trying to present?
Subject to an easement for the benefit of Lot 1 in a strip of land two feet wide, about 79 and 43 1/100 feet long, lying along the southwesterly edge of the granted premises. That's the description of the easement.
Yeah. But they don't have an easement for the three lots in the back where they want to put the building. They don't have it.
The easement goes to Lot 1 and that's where the parking is. We don't need to actually park before that. I'll give you a copy of the stuff from when the lot was originally created.
Am I correct to say that this is from prior owners of the land, not your current ownership? So that's prior. So the easement that's for current owner is the one that he has stated on. Do you have a copy of your current easement that you agreed with?
No. Can I see that one? I don't, because that's the one from 1929. That's when the easement was originally granted.
This is the exhibit A that's recorded at the registry of deeds. Contains 915 square feet together with all easements in a 20-foot strip of, in a 40-foot circle leading into the boulevard at the right of ways, shown on site during recording of the mudslide. Subject to an easement for the benefits of Lot 1 and strip of land of two feet wide.
I strongly request that you take one of these things. This is regarding from now to like seeing the situation.
Yeah, but we're just dealing with the zoning. The easement is very simple and simplified. We have to deal with the zoning from the back. That's pretty much what I think.
And in reading that, the two foot, the one, the other store, you have, you're making a comment that it's only Lot 1. It's not Lot 1 in the real office. Not, but it doesn't indicate Lot 2, 3, or 4. It doesn't indicate, and that's...
But they don't have a right to the whole thing. They do not have a right. The easement does not extend to the back lots. Plan that. That's a sorridge easement.
You're telling me that they have the right to the easement to the back lots? No, they don't.
The city has the right to maintain the sorridge.
Oh, the city does, yeah, sure, yeah. I have no objections to that. And this is very common. Are there any other members wish to speak? Can you press the button?
Just one question now, Mike, if I could, on these... They have the, what's, I can't get across my head. This gentleman basically is saying that he doesn't want any easement at all on the property. Is this correct? This is what I'm understanding? Is that what you're trying to say, sir? You don't want anybody, you don't want anyone going on through the easement at all? Basically what you're saying, you don't want any vehicles going down the road, correct?
Correct.
Well, they already have...
As it stands right now, it's doable.
I'll make it quick, Michael. I'm sorry, Michael. Just make it quick. I just want to...
As it stands right now, I've corrected some of the problems by allowing guests from Tina's guests to park on my property if they can't park outside. It's doable, but I do the plowing, I do the cleaning, nobody chips in.
Sure, no, that's not, no, no.
That's not a zoning issue. There's an easement in place. We're not here to discuss the problems you're having with the easement. You can take that up at the building department, whatever you want. We're here for the zoning issue. There is an easement in place for them to gain access to the back of the property.
To the back lots?
To the back of that property. There's an easement.
I don't believe, I don't believe so.
They already have it now. They can get, they can get to their property.
How?
How do they get to it now? They can't go through my property to get to the back lots. How do they get to their property now? They, well, to their, to their single-family house, they have an easement to go down the driveway to that house. They do not have an easement through my property to go into the back lots and that's a fact.
That's a fact. But you know that there's an easement, so there's no way of prohibiting, even if they want to continue using that, they have the right to use it.
Not through my property, they can't.
No, but they have the right through the property that's existing now.
How are they going to get there? There's a building in the way. There's a building in the way and they only have access to that one parcel. I believe that they do not have the right to go to the three parcels in the back of that building. They're separate, it's a separate unity.
How does the vehicle, can I ask you, sir? That small, I saw, I see the plan of the home. How does, does a vehicle get there to that home? That's number one question. How's the... When you say easement, your property, correct? Well, my point to this whole thing is this, if you could, sir. No matter how many units we're talking, they already have an approval for two families. So my point is that, did you make a point, a valid point back then, not to allow that? Take away how many units we're talking, sir. My point is this, sir. You don't, you don't have to come. My point to you is this, sir. Take away the units. My point is this. They have an easement right, right now, as I can see, right now, tomorrow, if she wants to build that two-family, she can park those vehicles there and she has every right to do that. Here going forward, what you're discussing with us, we just got to come up with something with what you're talking about. So my point to you is this. We, they have the approval for a two-family back then. She wants to extend it to, you know, eight units, correct? My point to you is this, sir. She has the approval, no matter what. I'm only trying to make a point. I'm trying to figure out exactly where the vehicles are going. I'm trying to vision in my mind because I really didn't see the property, sir. So what I'm trying to tell you is this, and I'm going to end it. Right now she has the approval for two-family. She's going through there to park her vehicles for two-family. That's, that's all I'm trying to tell you. I'm trying to figure out, you know, what you're exactly, I'm trying to grasp on where, which other way are they going to... I'm trying to grasp on where, which, which other way are they gonna go?
Well, if you put up a two-family on that location, she would have to provide parking for the people in that two-family.
It's right here.
Where she gonna park?
Sir, we're not here to discuss, sir. I'm gonna ask you to go to the mic again, please.
I'm sorry, Mike.
If you can go to the mic, please. You have to go to the mic to speak, I'm sorry. The two, the two-family is not an issue because that was approved, the parking plan. You were at the meeting with that, sir.
Okay, I was at the meeting.
You know about where they're gonna park for the two-family.
But I was never notified, sir, that there was gonna be a two-family, that it was approved for a two-family. I was never notified of that.
No, that, you, you wouldn't be. You were notified of the hearing that took place here.
And I was at the hearing, and I opposed that.
And it was approved that night, so you were here. If, if you stayed at the meeting, you would know that it was approved. I don't know if you left early or whatever. Then it's publicized in the paper, so it's approved. Now, let's not even deal with that.
All right, let's get back to this situation with the easement that does not apply to the back lots.
And that we have to get clarification on. So I, I do agree with you there. We will get clarification on that.
So there's the problem. Second of all, you're gonna have, if, if, if you approve it, and it does go through, and she does build it, we're gonna have sixteen cars plus going up and down that driveway, and it's gonna be a mess. Who's gonna take care of it? It's a problem.
That's an issue that you're raising, and it's a valid issue. But we're dealing with the zoning right now, not how many cars go down that driveway, or who's gonna take care of it.
And it's a non-conforming lots. My building is, part of, part of the backyard is a non-conforming, it's not a building lot in the back where the, where the cars are parked.
Right.
So as a matter of fact, I couldn't even hot-top that. They didn't want me, the conservation didn't want me to hot-top it. So it's got gravel over there. But in order for me, in order to alleviate the problem as far as parking is concerned, I allow Tina to.
But Tina's not even in the picture here. That's your, a butter that you may be a good naval with. It's nothing to do with tonight.
All right.
You already got Tina. If you want to let her park on your property, well and good.
Okay, but I'm just telling you what the problems are over there. If you would give them the variance to put that building up, that, that driveway is gonna be a mess.
Okay, and that's, well, that's, point is taken.
And they have no access to the back lots.
Okay, now, we gotta clarify. All right, thank you.
And I'd appreciate if you, if you did not give them the variance to put that building up. It'll be a disaster for us. Thank you very much.
Point is taken. For, I have the question concerning the plan that we have here, the Mylar that was in place. The Mylar is not, it doesn't show the be, the existing and the proposed, which it should have. Now, our application clearly states how it should be written on the plan, and it's not. Because it should give all of the variances you're requesting, side yard, and it's not on there. This is so hard to read, it's crazy. What? So in looking at this, this Mylar, your house currently, the current home is sitting on Lot 4 of 3,914 feet. So there already is an easement to get to Lot 4, because that's where you can park right now.
Correct.
So that's on, that's there. So there is an easement to get to Lot 4, because that's where the house is now, and she has parking at that home. Did I answer your question concerning that?
We drive over where the house is, the house is gone.
Because, as long as they can get to Lot 4 to get to the back, then there's no issue as far as us concerned here.
Lot 1 is where Valentina's house is.
Lot 1 is her house.
Lot 1 is Valentina's house.
But she has an easement to get to her home now, which is Lot 4. No, it's to Lot 4. So if she wants to go to Lot 4 to get to the back lots, she has the right to do that.
I don't believe so.
Then you, then, then you should seek legal counsel if you don't believe so. But we have to look at, you're saying Lot 1. She lives on Lot 4 right now and has a right to get to that lot. And is it depicting this picture that you'll be going to those other lots for vehicle traffic?
No, they, you can see where the parking is all on Lot 4.
Okay, thank you. Plan with the Mylar we can depict. The owner of Lot X, am I correct that you're the owner of Lot X, the 5,781 square feet in the back? It says, Michelson Realty Trust? And that's where you currently park with the gravel? Am I correct in the back? Okay. The question that's being raised is, you have access to Lot 4 for the vehicular traffic. He's bringing up a question that you don't have access to Lot C, D, and E, which seemingly is valid, because you don't have access to those lots if you're, if the, the building, how are they, the people getting to that building?
I'm confused.
How are the pedestrians getting to that, to that building?
Well, the, the building is raised one foot, one, one story off the ground. So when they come out of the parking lot, they just walk under the building, and that's how they'll access the elevator and stuff. They don't, they're not gonna, not only are they not gonna walk across Larry's land, there's gonna be trees and stuff there as a barrier, so that people are not tempted to encroach on his property.
So what you're telling me, that the entire building, all the way that your building is raised up, is it parking under?
We talked about that, but the architects are afraid that we're gonna need to put some crossbeams in there to, because of potential wind. Or one, if not, then yeah, we can park under the whole building. But yeah.
That's something I don't know.
But the plan doesn't show any parking under the building.
No, it shows your parking on the site.
Yeah. But yeah, we could potentially, you know, redesign the underneath piece and put cars underneath to add additional parking.
If you have, if you're gonna put beams in the way, you have access issues to get to the back.
You, you mean people walking, or are you driving? But you know, you won't need to drive there if we, right now, the, the plan that you have, people are only driving to Lot 4. And then they get out of their cars and they walk to the back lots. And they can do that by walking under the building. They don't need to walk around the building. And they're ten feet around the building if they wanted to walk around, but they don't need to do that. And like I said, those are gonna be plantings and stuff to discourage people from falling over onto Larry's land.
But if you're raising the building, is there an issue why you can't put all the parking under the building?
Does that, how does that help us if we did that?
You'd have the ample parking that would be needed. Right now, you're asking for variance for parking, but you're also not depicting that you have one, two, three, four, five, six compact cars that aren't even listed, that aren't even valid for the nine-by-18 parking space. So you're actually asking for more of a variance for parking.
If we did that, then we'd have ten full-size spaces, and then we'd find another six spaces under the building. And we would have one less, you know, variance that we'd be requesting. If, if that helps, then I'm all for it. I mean, I've been talking to some people in the city, and they've said that a lot of buildings are being passed that don't have the parking. But if having the parking is gonna be the decision-maker, then we can definitely find parking underneath the building.
What's the will of the members here? Do we want to vote on this, or do we want? What clarification is needed for this?
So I think the easement issue is confusing, because on the, in the current easement, there are two different easements mentioned. There's the parking easement, which is, which they say it's 20 feet wide, and then it comes into a 40-foot circle. But there's another easement for the benefit of Lot 1, so that Lot 1 can tie into the sewer. So if you look on the, I think it would be the right-hand side of the building, on your, on the smaller side of the building, there's a small two-foot easement that just runs along the side of the existing building. And that is just so that Lot 1 can access the sewer. So I think that's where it got confusing. Larry was thinking that it's, it is for the benefit of Lot 1, but Lot 1 is actually the house in front of my house.
I'd, I'd like to know the will of the members here. Do you want a motion to continue? I'm willing to vote on this now, but is there a motion to continue? There's a motion to continue. Roll call.
Mr. Vachilli? Yes, Mr. DeAngelo? Yes, Mr. Loebz? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mazzoni? Yes, Mr. Tucker?
No.
No. Motion carries. Continue till August 29th, 4:00 p.m.
We're continuing for what? To get a clarification for the easement to the back lots? Go ahead.
I would suggest clarification for parking under the building. And I would suggest conservation to be involved in this, too.
And for the easement to the rear lots. So before we come, you come back to us, you'd need to confirm that you have the legal right to get to the back lots. And then also the clarification as far as parking underneath. So that you would not have to require a variance for parking.
Okay.
Is that correct? That's, the two things that you're concerned about is the access to the back lots and the parking.
So as far, you know.
Yeah, conservation is a total different thing. Conservation is a whole different hearing, has nothing to do with us.
Okay, so I'd bring you a letter. Should I, do I need to reapply, or just provide you that letter?
This is continued as of this point.
Okay, so I just provide you with that letter.
You provide with the information. You may want to speak to the site plan review to let it, for the question on parking underneath the building, because they communicate with conservation and the other divisions, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing that there's no more business, we'll be meeting on August 29th at 4:00 p.m.